Thank you for joining us tonight for a debate with the four Watertown City Council candidates, each joining us this evening. Anthony Velasquez to the left here, Shane Garabrant, Doug Osborne and Pete Monaco before you. So, Mr. Velasquez, we'll start with you tonight. Even after making cuts, the tax rate's gone up by 9% and 7% respectively over the last two years for Watertown property owners. With multimillion dollar deficits projected in coming years, taxes may need to continue to be raised. So, each candidate sitting here tonight has said that cuts will be needed. Where would you cut and how many staff or services can be cut without degrading what the city or how the city operates?
Well, the answer to how many staff members could be cut exactly is not, you know, cut and dry, it's not well-known. But, you know, I came in tonight with a few examples of where I would cut. So, you know, first, I know that busing, reevaluating bus routes, trying to, you know, right-size the approach to that. I've seen oftentimes several city buses that are half-empty. I think that there's some that can be cut from there, you know, adjusting some of the bus routes. Some estimates I've seen, actually, that can save up to $200,000. On another note, from a staff standpoint, you know, we added 20 new positions in the 2022 budget. And it's kind of been the mantra that the city and leadership has not done a great job of engaging in long-term planning. You know, they celebrated the fact that they lowered the property tax rate back in 2021 and 2022 without really adjusting and looking at what was coming down the road in 2030, especially with the loss of the hydro revenue. The other area that I believe we can cut is, at some point, I am going to be in favor if the golf course does not break even, of actually cutting and closing the city-owned golf course. I believe strongly that local government should provide essential services such as police, fire, you know, plowing of the roads. And unfortunately, with where the city is going financially at the moment, we cannot have these extra amenities. You know, the other thing that's worth, and this isn't a cut, this is contractual. I've heard that the fire department is actually interested, the members and potentially the union, I believe, has endorsed 24-hour shifts. I remember listening to Dan Doherty, president of the union, speak recently, actually back in January, I believe, at a council meeting, you know, and he was advocating for this change. You know, this change saves $300,000 a year. I think that's a good pathway to go down. But ultimately, you know, the next council members need to be strong, they need to be decisive, as opposed to, you know, getting a budget in May, you know, soliciting public feedback and saying, oh, well, you know, we're at a 25% tax rate increase and, you know, pare it down to 10% and celebrate that. No. You know, I believe strongly that the next council members, you know, need to go to the city manager and say, give us a budget with the tax rate, tax increase as close to the property tax, you know, cap as possible.
All right. Mr. Garabrant, what would you have to say?
Yeah, so, I think being on the outside of things, not being on council, it's premature for me to stay specific cuts that can be made. I think as Mr. Velasquez said, that, you know, a good place to start would be the 20 positions that were added in the recent years. I think also attrition is a good thing to look into. Anytime someone retires or leaves their position, we analyze if, as a council, if that's a position that needs to be filled. I think most importantly, though, it's to get on the budget early and be proactive on that issue. I'd call for, in January, city council presenting to the city manager that we know where our budget situation is heading, we know what we're looking at for a tax rate increase in May. That's not going to be acceptable to us, that's not going to be acceptable to the public. We would like to have a work session in March to really discuss potential areas for spending cuts and so that we can discuss how those would impact the budget, how they would impact public services. I don't believe it's on the city manager to present a budget at, you know, 2% or 3% tax rate increase because that's making, having him make these political decisions that city council is elected to make. We are representatives of the people. So, I believe that having that March work session where we can get some ideas of figures from these cuts and we can get ideas of how amenities and public services would be impacted, then we can go to the community, have, you know, two months before budget season approaches in May, to really form a consensus and get feedback from the city taxpayers. Because I feel like the past several years, you know, the budget's been proposed end of April, and then by May, they have these marathon budget work sessions where a lot of decisions are made in a short period of time, and you're not able to get that feedback because going door-to-door, what, the feedback I've gotten is everyone's agreed that 25% tax rate increase is a non-starter, it's not acceptable. But where the debate happens is in areas that cuts should be made. Everyone has a different opinion of what could be kept, what could be cut. And so, I think we need time to really discuss and get a consensus. So, that's how I'd like to handle it.
Mr. Osborne?
Yeah, so, you know, 24% or double-digit tax increases year after year is just, it is unacceptable. It stifles growth. It, you know, discourages people to remain living in the city. It discourages people to move here and it discourages investment. So, you know, we, I know that multiple candidates have talked about, you know, we have a spending problem or we have a revenue problem, we have both, and we have to reconcile that. So, you know, we are going to have to look at some cuts, and I think one place where we could start are potential vacancies that we could look at to see if we can take them out of the budget altogether if we haven't filled the position. But I agree with Mr. Garabrant. I think, you know, all of us are going to have, whoever gets elected are going to have to look at each and every item in the budget and specifically sit down and look at it. It's difficult to do that at this point, but we're going to have to wait, whoever gets elected, look at item by item, have a collaborative approach with staff to see what we can take out of there and save some money where we can.
Mr. Monaco?
I think all of us are kind of on the same page. You know, there's been some vacant positions, I think the manager could have left. The council maybe should have told the manager, we don't want to fill these positions right now. They fill, you know, there's a forester position, great thing, the city's got a lot of trees they have to maintain, but did we really need that particular position? Mid-level management may have to be looked at. There's no contract per se, collective bargaining or management. Maybe management raises, don't hit what they think they should in the coming year, you know, and there's just, I don't think you're going to cut 20 positions, but everything needs to be looked at. You know, the firemen have got these safer grants, well, they expire. And when they expire, we're paying, we, the city taxpayers, and like the rest of the gentlemen up here knocking on doors, you hear, geez, you know, the golf course, okay, well, that's over, they bought it, paid for, we've got to do something with it. But I think they gotta just rein in the spending, a lot of things that'd be nice to have, but you can't afford to have everything that you'd like to have, just like at home, you know? Geez, I'd like a 10-stall garage, but I only can afford a two, you know? And they've really got to look at the positions. And anything vacant, I think the council needs to take, president council and council coming up needs to tell the manager, whoa, let's, we got some vacancies, let's see if we can get by without them because you're not going to hire a person and possibly lay them off. Because it's kind of like the old thing, the last guy in is the first guy that gets laid off. So, I just think they need to put the brakes on the hiring at the present time.
All right. Mr. Garabrant, we'll start with you for our second question. The largest financial decisions that the city's going to be facing in the next few years will be water-related. $60 million for a federally mandated drinking water project, tens of millions of dollars to repair the reservoir or replace the reservoir in Thompson Park that's more than 100 years old, recurring costs into millions to replace and repair cities' aging water pipe system. So, how does the city pay for this? And would a grant writer be beneficial for these and other projects to help to mitigate what the city's paying out of pocket?
I think would that be something to be investigated, a grant writer? I think otherwise, yeah, you're looking at bonding potentially, and those are, unfortunately, those are the costs that a city government should be investing in, and they're just coming at a time where we're dealing with other budget issues. I think, you know, that makes it unfortunate, some of the unnecessary spending that we've seen the past few years when these things all come down the road, but that doesn't mean that we should kick the can down the road on these issues. These are things we should spend money on, especially because, you know, if the goal of the city government, which is what I feel it should be, is to attract families to living in the city, to attract businesses to move into the city, then you want them to have the utmost confidence in your drinking water, you want your infrastructure to be top-notch. So, I think, you know, we could, you could look into a grant writer. I think some of those, you know, you're still somewhat playing the odds on whether or not you get them. These grants are very competitive, so that it might not fund itself. But otherwise, yeah, you're just going to have to kind of bond and eat the costs, unfortunately.
Mr. Osborne?
Yeah, so, I think this, you know, when we're talking about these water projects, I think it speaks to a larger issue, right? And that is, you know, city council and previous city councils and staff have not been proactive. They have kicked the can down the road year after year until the bottom falls out, and then, you know, a new council or whoever, and the taxpayer is footing the bill. I mean, it's this deferred maintenance that, this deferred maintenance philosophy that has just been prevalent over the years is catching up with us. So, I think, you know, there's, we need to have clean drinking water. We need to fix the reservoir because it's been leaking hundreds of thousands of gallons of water, treated water. I don't know what the monetary value on that, but it can't be cheap. So, you know, we should take this as a learning exercise, and when we see some of these other issues coming down the road or infrastructure projects that we need to address, we take it seriously, we budget accordingly, and we take a proactive approach to it.
Mr. Monaco?
Water is just one thing that, like Doug said, the reservoir's been leaking for 25 years or however long. That's a $30 million, possible $30 million. They've already kind of put a resolution out that they will bond for that. You know, the disinfectant byproducts is $60 million. The city's looking at an $8, $9 million courtroom renovation. There may be $25 to $30 million for this western outfall trunk sewer. They're under a DEC consent order to stop the infiltration, and there's some of that. We take influence from the town of Watertown on the south end, and they are cause of some of it. You know, there's a small shopping mall, strip mall, whatever you want to call it, on the edge of town on Coffeen that can't get sewer permits because of this western outfall sewer. And if somebody came into Watertown, right, not a house, but somebody that needed some kind of capacity that was in that, that's a huge basin. And it's above the high school, runs all the way to the south end of the city, the west end ends up on Coffeen Street, also picks up the Arsenal Coffeen Corridor. And if it was in the city, oh, we can't help you, we can't hook up to the sewer. There was a car wash planned on Arsenal Street, you know, and they backed out, there's going to be a little Seven Brew Coffee drive-through. You know, not just that, but now, they haven't had any problems with the water plant in the last two and a half years. You get a card that would tell you if they exceeding the limitations on the two chemicals that are causing the problems. I don't know if that's sustainable, but I do know that $60 million, they're thinking of splitting it, and they've, so far, they've not had good luck on grants. They tried to get some department, Department of Defense grants, they've got a million bucks from Senator Schumer or that type of thing. They've got some money, but it's nowhere's near enough. You know, with the courthouse, that's got to be paid for, it's going to be bonded. That's, I said, eight, nine million, the bid's open tomorrow, I believe on it. And that's kind of an unfunded mandate by the State Office of Court Administration. The city's got some real tough decisions to make going forward, and the spending has got to be curtailed to a point. You got to plow the roads, okay? And you got to sweep the streets. But some of this stuff has just got to be, the brakes put on, so.
Mr. Velasquez?
Oh, definitely. So, you know, as it pertains to the hydro issue, I'm not an expert on the matter and I don't believe in acting like one. But, you know, if elected, my biggest priority at the moment also would be ensuring that a new iteration of the hydro committee meets, that we continue to listen to the experts. You know, I've read pretty thoroughly Skip Tremble's hydro report from the previous hydro committee, as well as they had a, in a analyst recently, a consultant, who kind of poured some cold water on, you know, the ESCO idea. I think the best idea we've heard currently on the hydro issue is the community choice aggregate. It's not giving the amount of revenue that the city has been used to, but it's a lot better than, you know, the alternative at the moment. So, according to projections based on historical outflows, the community choice aggregate would provide between $1 million and $4 million in revenue with an expected average value of about 2.5 million a year. And this appears to be the most realistic and low-risk option. So, as it pertains to infrastructure, infrastructure is key to running a successful city and instilling confidence in your residents. So, you know, the next council needs to address, as the other gentlemen have alluded to, the reservoir leak. You know, council, again, going back to this idea where we're not the best at planning for the long term, and, you know, we kick the can down the road far too often. I personally believe that infrastructure being as important as it is, as integral to the city and city operations, that we should build a new reservoir. I understand that the cost is high, you know, but I would much rather have something that the chance is higher it'll last, you know, 50 to 100 years, as opposed to lining it, which has a useful life of about 15 years, you know? And then 15 years down the line, we're back at square one in the same situation. You know, the disinfected byproduct issue is interesting, and I say it's interesting because, you know, it is my understanding that we're actually currently in compliance. So, you know, we've been in contact on the city level with the EPA and should continue to apply for as many grants as possible to alleviate any future burden on the taxpayer. You know, especially as we talk about cutting positions, grant writer, that's, you know, that's a value-added position. That's a position where, you know, as someone up here previously alluded to, it's, you're not guaranteed to get those grants, but it's life-changing if you do receive one of these grants. You know, that's less money that we have to go to city taxpayers and ask for, especially if we bond for these projects. We might be asking city taxpayers, you know, to pay a portion over the next 20 years, for instance. Grant writing and ultimately, hopefully, receiving a grant kind of alleviates that. I'm also interested, we talk infrastructure, I'm interested in addressing roads. You know, the quality of our roads, I believe, has degraded significantly over time. There's a lot of neighborhoods in the city, especially on the north side, where, you know, walking door-to-door, I actually fell on a sidewalk on the north side, and it kind of gave me that firsthand look at what some of the residents in some neighborhoods in the city have been experiencing. So, I am personally interested, I know that there was a sidewalk program in the past, I think that program should be brought back. You know, no one likes to see taxes go up. I am absolutely and unequivocally opposed to double-digit tax rate increases. But, you know, if taxes go up around the cost of living, around the consumer price index, but we're seeing roads getting worked on and there's upgrades to the water system and sidewalks are being worked on, it somewhat justifies the expense when you're seeing your tax dollars being applied responsibly and equitably, and you're seeing neighborhood improvement and neighborhood revitalization take place.
Don't want to cut you off, but I want to keep us moving here, Mr. Osborne. We'll move on to question number three for you guys. No one likes a site of blighted properties in their neighborhood. Expensive upfront costs and absentee property owners, however, make it a more challenging issue for the city to address. So, should the city take on those costs, or do you see a more efficient method for cleaning up blight?
I think it's a complicated issue, particularly what you alluded to. I mean, it's difficult to get hold of some of these absentee landlords. I think there should be some sort of, like, log where they have to provide, one, you know, a contact person, not just a P.O. box, a legitimate phone number and an address, so we can get in touch with them in case of an emergency, or, you know, to inform them, you know, more quickly that their house is deteriorating, they have chronic code violations, things of that nature. I mean, you know, when we talk about some of these blighted homes, particularly the one at Coffeen Street, which has been kind of, you know, an example of one that has been at the point of contention, there's a lot of issues with that. I mean, the city had originally said that they want to tear it down. I think that's, I think that's what everybody kind of agreed upon at first, but then realizing that it's not in city possession, you know, I think that would kind of create a dangerous precedent in a way. I think, you know, we really do need to talk to the owners of these dilapidated houses and see if they want to transfer, you know, title over to us, if that would streamline, you know, getting these, getting these properties back on the tax rolls, or, you know, at least doing something with them.
Mr. Monaco?
I don't know, five or six years ago, there was a city rental registry. I have a park, I have a house that I rent, and I registered it, my name is there, my phone number, and that's probably an email, and I believe that rental, all rental properties were to be registered now. At one time, it was pretty complete, not sure what it is today, and that's something for codes could go through the records and see. To get good addresses, contact people for these blighted properties. And it seems, when I worked for the city, we used to do a lot of cleanups for, codes would order, they'd order the homeowner to do it, they didn't do it, they'd send orders to Public Works, we would go out, clean the mess up and charge them. If they didn't pay, they'd put it on the taxes. And as far as some of these houses that need to come down, I understand that there's like 13 houses in the city that they have targeted for demolition. Something's got to happen with them. But to take two down and pick up two was, I don't know, $94,000. That's a lot of money, but they get, everything has to be disposed of in the Development Authority landfill, and that's not cheap. The city gets a cut rate on the tipping fees for blighted properties. And as some people alluded, you know, we needed to have title to them, they need to get something going on people who haven't paid their taxes for two years. When you don't pay your taxes, it goes up for tax sale, and the people, you know, anybody could buy that tax sale certificate, and you get 12% interest a year, better than any bank. But that's just kind of, the Supreme Court had some stuff going, the city's legal council needs to get moving on that, so they can get back into taking properties that aren't, taxes aren't paid on, and either sell them back after the redemption period expires and have control of them, you know, and sell them to someone. Or the person who bought the tax sale certificate would automatically get ownership after two years. So, that may help on some of it, but as far as knocking them down, there's, I noticed one today that I was, I had, you know, worked for the city, I was all over town, I just went by today and go, man, this place is really bad. And they've got, they've got to do something with the cleanup, some of the stuff. It just gives a place for unhoused people to sneak into. And look at the little fire on Newell Street here a couple of weeks ago, they figure some unhoused people caused, keeping warm, caused a blaze in an abandoned rafting warehouse. So, boarded up, but they still got in. So, it's a tough, tough question to get done because it all costs money, and that's one thing the city's kind of shy on.
Mr. Velasquez, blighted properties, how does the city address it? Should it spend more, or should it find a better way of doing things?
Definitely. Thank you for the question. So, I'm glad to hear someone address the fact that blighted properties are more than just an eyesore. You know, blighted properties, you know, they decrease a neighborhood's attractiveness, they encourage squatters, as Mr. Monaco alluded to, you know, this illicit drug activity, we have a great problem on our streets with drug usage. You know, they elevate the fire risk, as we've seen play out far too often over the past few months, you know, and overall, they lower the property value. Residents are not going to invest in their homes, you know, upkeep and upgrading their homes, if their property values are dropping because of what their neighborhoods are becoming. You know, this makes our neighborhoods less safe and contributes to a negative perception that often clouds the city of Watertown, and it deters investment and encourages this outward migration that we've seen play out over the past decade. So, I attended a council work session several months ago, and they actually gave a really good presentation on what the council is currently doing as it pertains to blighted properties. As the gentlemen up here have previously mentioned, our first step should be ensuring that we have an adequate way of contacting these landlords. When making contact, we should be pushing these property owners to agree to what they call a restoration agreement. You know, this agreement outlines repair timelines, items to be addressed, and it outlines a fine schedule if these properties are not addressed and corrective action is not taken in a timely manner. You know, these more egregious code violations should absolutely result in appropriate fines being levied. If these properties are left unaddressed, they can and frankly should ultimately be foreclosed upon. If a property is abandoned, the city should pursue legal action to be reimbursed for any subsequent demolition expense. I am in favor of the city spending additional money on this, you know, within reason. We can't go tear down every single blighted property in town, especially in light of the budget situation, but it should be done, or it should be carried out in a methodical and intelligent manner.
Mr. Garabrant?
Yeah, I think more can be done because I feel like with, you know, the properties that were slated for demolition that got voted down, I feel like, you know, the issue is there's no clear policy of why those properties were chosen among others and why even it was voted down. I think, I attended the same work session that Anthony was at, and I, the issue with the process that they're going over of this grading system of properties is that it's not really reproducible at the moment. It's kind of all up to the head of the codes department on how he feels these should be graded. If we get a new head of codes, we're not going to have, you know, it's not going to be able to be duplicated, that exact procedure. So, I feel like we need a true procedure that documents of like, this is, this is what triggers removal or, you know, a fine or something like that. I don't feel like that that's clear. Going door-to-door, what you hear a lot is, you know, that it feels as though codes, the codes department, they'll, they'll come after you if you're trying to improve your property, if you're trying to put up a fence, if you're trying to, you know, put up a new garage, something like that. But then all these other properties that are, you know, falling in, seemingly nothing's done. So, I'd like to see, you know, our codes department be more proactive in those properties and maybe leave alone some of the ones that are trying to improve their, you know, their properties some more. I also think, you know, this is a nationwide issue, so I don't think Watertown itself needs to reinvent the wheel on what can be done. You know, I've done some looking into what other municipalities have been able to do, and, you know, Youngstown, Ohio had a policy of putting pressure on banks to speed up the foreclosure process to turn those over so they get back on the tax rolls faster. New Haven, Connecticut, you know, had some legislation that pressured absentee landlords of keeping up their properties. And even just Rochester, New York, had partnered with Monroe County, I believe, to develop a database of, you know, blighted properties and, you know, property grading. So, I think there's ways that our city can be proactive on this and actually have a reproducible approach on how they handle it, rather than, you know, just kind of tackling whatever seems to pop up in the news.
All right. Mr. Monaco, we'll move to you. Residency requirements in the city have been in the spotlight for department heads, but what about for other city staff? Should police officers or firefighters be required to live within the city?
I believe police and fire are exempt by New York State statute, okay? As far as department heads, when I went to work there a number of years ago, 30-plus years ago, every department had but one lived in the city, and that person was elevated from another position and kind of like, okay, you're, you know, you've been here, we'll say 10 years, you can take this job and we're not going to make you move in. You know, every, I've worked for, there have been 12 city managers, including interims, since 1991, and every city manager until Mr. Wagoner has lived in the city. I feel that they should feel the same pain that the residents feel. You know, they should feel the same pain of the 7% and 9% tax increase. They should feel the pain of the same potholes that we drive over. They should feel the same pain of whatever happens in the city. So, yeah, I'm a fan of that, and back in 2000, the city the city council passed a resolution, Mr. Hiller was the city manager, he proposed a resolution, a pass by the council, that priority in competitive and non-competitive positions be given to city residents. Now, I did the majority of hiring at Public Works for the time I was there. And I always, if a person, this guy's here, and this guy's here, and he lives in Three Mile Bay, and this guy's in Watertown, and they're pretty much equal, I'm going to hire the guy in Watertown, because he can get here if we call him, if it's a bad storm. The guy in Three Mile Bay can get here, we need you now if it's a bad situation. So yeah, I'm in favor of residency. The present council's passed, you know, some resolutions, and that was their, that's their choice for the positions that are required by public officer law. And the next city manager, I believe, if I'm on the council, I'm going to make a huge push for that gentleman and whoever else department has, especially the manager, to reside in the city.
Mr. Velazquez.
Definitely. So I couldn't help but laugh at the next city manager. So as it is currently, the city manager does not have a contract, to my knowledge. I believe Mr. Wagner has expressed interest in signing on for another two-year contract. I personally think the city should go in a new direction and put forth a local law for a ballot referendum next year to gauge interest, to see if city residents are interested in having a strong mayor form of government. This form of government, not to go off on too much of a tangent here, this form of government, I believe, you know, encourages conversation, and it encourages civic engagement in city government. You know, when you have an elected official who is overseeing day-to-day operations, maybe with the help of, you know, an administrative assistant, someone who does have a certain level of qualifications, but someone who's answerable directly to the people, as opposed to unelected bureaucrats. As it pertains to the residency issue, you know, back in July, let me set a little history lesson here. Back in July, council voted to extend a residency exemption after the fact to the city manager, as well as several other high-level city officials, including, you know, the city engineer and the public works superintendent. I am absolutely opposed to this. I think this was a hastily made decision. I know some gentlemen up here have expressed that, you know, by forcing the residency issue, that you kind of risk losing good people. I have to push back on that. I disagree. And here's why. These are highly paid, well-paid positions with good benefits, you know, well in excess of six figures oftentimes. If someone is qualified for this position and wants the position that badly, I believe strongly that they should relocate to the city of Watertown. You know, you, Mr. Monaco alluded to this, you should live among the residents, you know, that you're dictating policy, you're dictating budget positions. I will never vote in favor of a residency exemption on top city officials. In fact, I would expand this to any future police chief and future fire chief, for the same reasons. You can't adequate, well, backtrack a little bit. You can address crime, but, you know, you have more of a personal stake in crime when you live in the city, among the residents. You know, same thing with the fire issue. Same thing with the homelessness, you know, the public safety issues, the drug issues in town. You're more in tune with those issues if you reside in the same community being plagued by those problems.
So when it comes to other staff in those departments, though, is it just the department heads you believe that should be the case for, or do you see it being top to bottom?
I believe it should be department heads, but I will say, you know, as a city schoolteacher, I feel that that has made me a lot more receptive and a lot more responsive. And it's made me better at my position, living in the same community that I teach. You know, I see students, I see families on the weekends. I've gone to sporting events before, I've been invited to gatherings at Thompson Park. You know, you become fully immersed and fully invested in your community, especially in education. You know, I have more of an active interest and more of an active investment in the educational attainment of my students. And I can't wait to see what they do, you know, when they graduate high school. And my biggest reason for being up here right now is to encourage more of these young folks to stay in the area and ensure that they have economic opportunity.
Mr. Garabrant. On residency requirements, you believe that the other staff outside of department heads, but also on the issue of department heads, should they be required to live in the city?
I feel like city staff, it's not realistic to require them to live in the city. Although, you know, during the residency debate, you know, it was thrown out that 2/3 of city staff do not live in the city. That was very disheartening. I want city staff to want to live in the city. I think if you're, you know, contributing and impacting our lives largely in a positive way, I want you to be in our community. So I think there's ways to look into incentivizing, you know, city staff to live in the city. I'm not saying, you know, it could be monetary, it could be paying non-city residents less when they start, if that, you know, looking into the legalities of that. It could be giving preference to a candidate who resides in the city. I think those are all things to consider to incentivize that. In terms of the department heads, I think, again, it'd be preference should go to those that live in the city. I think in some cases, though, like at the city engineer, we had one applicant for that position last time it was open, and he does not reside in the city. So are you supposed to leave that position open? I don't think that's beneficial to the city. In terms of the city manager, not to relitigate decisions that have already been made, but I think that was, you know, a one-of-one scenario. We had a candidate for that position that was overly qualified, you could argue, for the position. He's not an outsider, he's from the area. He's resided here for a long time, he's from the North Country. So he knows our community, even if he's not in the city proper. And I have to push back on some of it. The city manager does not dictate budgets. He presents budgets. The city council, that is their job, to oversee those budgets and make those decisions. So they're the ones that are representative to the people. So I think it's, you know, it's somewhat, hypocritical's the wrong word, but it's wanting it both ways to say that you're going to, you know, have the city manager cut $20 million from the spending budget, while also, you know, saying that he doesn't live in the city, so he shouldn't have that position to begin with. I think, I think moving forward, the city manager should live in the city. I would be all for holding that requirement when we have another applicant for the position. But I think in the current situation, you know, it's a one-of-one. And also, I think at this point, the decision's been made. So when we're, whoever is elected, when they start in January, I think it's in the best interest of the city to move forward. If we're going to relitigate every decision that's been made the past four years, we're not going to make any progress solving these long-term issues. We're just going to, you know, be going backwards again. So yeah, so I think, you know, city manager should, moving forward, live in the city. Department heads and city staff, preference largely should be given.
Mr. Osborne.
Yeah, I'd have to agree a lot with what Mr. Garabrant has said. I mean, ultimately, I would prefer that all our upper management would live in the city and reside here. I know that that's not entirely realistic. And in the future, I'd like to show preference to those that are willing to live in the city. In terms of lower staff, you know, I would, I would completely would love to have them live in the city, but, you know, we're looking, we have to look at quality candidates and who's willing to take some of these positions, too. Regarding the city manager, you know, I agree again with Mr. Garabrant on this. He had, I mean, Mr. Wagner has a ton of credentials, and I think he has built a bridge between the city and Fort Drum that we haven't seen since maybe former city manager Mary Corvo. So I think that's incredibly beneficial. On the other hand, you know, when we do get, when we do have to fill the city manager position in the future, we're going to have to enforce the residency requirement. I think this is kind of almost an exception to the rule. I'm not willing to relitigate this issue that, again, has been resolved already. I just don't, I'm not in the position to, you know, disrupt the city any further than it already has been over the last several years, due to all this dysfunction that we've seen. I just want to touch upon one other thing. I know that Mr. Velazquez had mentioned, you know, implementing this strong mayor notion. You know, if there's an outcry from the public, then it should be placed to a referendum. But I think also, at the same time, you know, there's some downsides to that. I think it opens up a lot of political influence and concentration of power into a single individual that, you know, I could, I believe would be a detriment to the city as a whole. Right now, as it stands with the city manager and the council form of government, the council has a check on the city manager and is, you know, the body that gives him directives. He answers to the city council, and the city council answers to the people at the end of the day. So, you know, when it does come to budgets and things of that nature, you know, it's city council's job ultimately to determine what gets cut, what gets passed, and so on. So I just, you know, if, again, if there's, you know, public outcry for a strong mayor, then, you know, put it, put it on the ballot. But again, you know, I'm not willing to relitigate the residence requirement for our current city manager at this time.
Can I respond to that?
We'll have time at the end for responses to things that folks have said during the debate. But Mr. Velazquez, we will go back to you.
Okay.
Can Watertown afford its city government? It's a question that's been asked, you know, years in the past, but with increasing costs year over year, would it make more sense for the city to dissolve and become part of the county?
I don't buy into that notion. You know, if we're talking about how great the city manager form of government is, and, you know, how great the council's working and not relitigating the past, then we absolutely, you know, need to double down, and we need to promote Watertown first. And we need to talk about, you know, how to improve our community without giving up on it. I think dissolving into the county is ultimately giving up on the city. And we have far too much potential. We have 23,000 residents who contribute greatly to our city. With that notion being said, though, you know, it is kind of interesting that the county budget came out today, and somehow the county is able to balance their budget. And not only balance the budget, but actually decrease property taxes, because they have an expanding tax base. So we need to ask ourselves, what are we not doing correctly in the city of Watertown that the county's doing correctly? The answer's not necessarily cut and dry here, but we need to focus on expanding the tax base. One issue that's been holding us back recently is zoning. You know, we talk about political influence. Zoning has been very political in the past. You look at the fact that there's a business owner who, well, backtrack a few months. You know, the council voted to finally allow dispensaries in the city. As much as some folks might disagree with that idea, that is, you know, one option for revenue. We need to become a pro-business city. New York State's not always the easiest state to conduct business in, but, you know, on the city level and local governments, the last thing we should be doing is adding unnecessary, you know, regulatory nonsense that stifles business growth in someone who wants to invest. You know, I know the owner of the cannabis depot that's comically located a stone's throw from city limits is interested in expanding into the city. Recently, council kind of wanted to add some zoning regulations and requirements on that, again, stifles business growth. You know, an individual wants to sell a property on Arsenal Street, you know, zoning got in the way of that. The golf course, we bought a golf course because someone didn't want to put townhouses up there. You know, the park is the gem of the community, but ultimately, we need to stop this nonsense that's been going on over the past decade, you know, of stifling business growth and interjecting and, you know, turning down revenue opportunities, ultimately. So no, I'm not willing to give up and say, let's just merge into the county.
Mr. Garabrant.
I think it's premature to say that, yeah, we should dissolve into the county. I mean, I think, I think we should definitely pursue, you know, if there's ways that we can have more shared services with the county, if there's ways, you know, we can decrease some of our spending by, you know, sharing with the county. I think responsibilities with the county, that could be something to look into. I think, you know, in the long term, we've done a lot of discussion, you know, recently and on here about spending cuts. But I feel like one thing that's been, you know, slightly under-discussed is, we really need to pursue avenues to increase revenue in the city. And I think one, one way that I would want to do that on council is by, in the long term, trying to find ways to attract a large-scale employer to our area. I think that's something that our community really needs. We're a middle-class community that's lost a lot of our middle-class jobs. So, you know, as Anthony alluded to, you know, we, New York State's not the most business-friendly, but there are large-scale employers in New York State that are thriving and expanding. So I'd like to reach out to municipalities that have those and see what have they done that's been, you know, successful in attracting those industries. You know, another thing that I'd like to see the city pursue is this advanced nuclear initiative that's being pushed in New York State. You know, so New York State, with all these clean energy initiatives and all-electric initiatives that are moving forward, they'd like to see, you know, a nuclear power plant or multiple built in New York State. And, you know, with the technologies now, it's safe, it's reliable, and it can go in locations that it might not have been previously been available to go. It can go in areas where there's not the large water sources nearby to cool the reactor that were previously required. So that's something I'd like to see the city investigate and say that, hey, we're interested in that. I know Messina, Oswego, they've all, you know, put their hat in the ring. I'd like to see us do the same. You know, and with those opportunities, there could come others. We have a lot of assets in our, in our area that can attract large-scale employers. We have, you know, skilled labor. We have an education center in JCC and several universities within an hour's drive. You know, and we have a large labor pool also, a large, from Fort Drum. I think our proximity to Fort Drum could be really used as an asset, particularly if we're able to, you know, hit on the advanced nuclear. I think you could see, you know, defense contracting firms and stuff like that really want to come to our area. And so those are all opportunities I'd like to see the city investigate, work with, you know, our county, state, and federal lawmakers, and see if there's ways that we can, you know, attract something like that to our area. Because I think that would be revenue, you know, we're not going to be able to cut our way out of, fully out of this budget crisis without seeing a major hit to the services and amenities that our areas used to. So I think we need a council that, you know, it might not be stuff that's being discussed every meeting, but that's happening in the background constantly. And that's what I'd like to see with city council.
Mr. Osborne, same question. Do you think the city can afford itself? And what do you think of the notion of dissolving into the county?
I would hate to see the city dissolve to the county. You know, I think it's a matter of, again, you know, going back to the fundamentals. I mean, we got to tighten our belts. We can't continue to spend frivolously like we have over the last several years. I mean, between the golf course and paying for a pool and just focusing a lot on these seasonal recreational activities which have reoccurring costs year after year, I think, you know, it puts a huge burden on the budget and the taxpayer. And I think it's something, those are things that we really need to kind of review moving forward, especially, you know, with a new council, to see, you know, where we can become more financially solvent in the future. I mean, it's, the last thing I would want to see us do is dissolve to the county or dissolve in general. I agree with Mr. Garabrant. I mean, I think we do have a lot of resources up here that are appealing to, you know, outside entities, given, you know, like a exorbitant workforce, you know, and a very qualified workforce. It's just a matter of luring them in, but I think we have to address these fundamental issues first, you know, to make us a little bit more appealing to outside entities to invest here, for sure.
Mr. Monaco.
You know, I had mentioned at a couple different one of these forums, forums, that if the city doesn't get their act together, they will be insolvent, and we may end up being the city of Jefferson. And that's a possi, I don't want that to happen, but that's a possibility. The revenue, the revenues are here, expenses are up here, that got to come back. You know, Amazon just built, I don't know, 100,000 square foot distribution center, 500 feet north of the border on, north of the city boundary on Bradley Street. You know, going back to zoning that was mentioned. I'm on the planning board, and I've been fairly probably the biggest critic of some of the zoning things. They revamped, original zoning was done in '59. It had been a hodgepodge over 50 years. And, but, they've got it so tightened up, and they want special use permits for everything. And a special use permits gives somebody a little bit of a, oh, we can do this or that. I just think, it's like, the only place a cannabis dispensary is allowed is I just think, just like, the only place a cannabis dispensary is allowed is Lower Arsenal Street, Upper State Street, the plaza up there and around, and there's another small area. They have, they call it urban mixed use, which is Upstate Street across, their corridors off the square. There's all kinds of little storefronts if a person wanted to use that. But I brought that up. I didn't get any support from anybody. And just like, if you build a, if you build a store, build anything, and you have 30 parking spaces, they mandate that you have two electric charging stations. That's $40,000, $50,000. Is that business-friendly? I don't think so. If you sell widgets, the other guy sells them and everybody's going to his store because they can plug in, maybe you'll end up doing it. Let the market do it. You know, the city gets, say, getting back to this, if the city doesn't get things together, they talk about trails, you know, trails are nice to walk on for recreation, but they got to be maintained and if you don't have the workforce to maintain, they become overgrown and like everything else, doesn't get taken care of the way it should. To lure people into the city, hey, they could have went in the industrial park off of Bello Avenue South. I don't know if anyone even, you know, that's almost as close to 81 as the Amazon store on Bradley Street. Did anybody know Amazon was coming? Did anybody try to push the city? They got to, there's a lot of acreage down there. That lot is not huge that Amazon's going, it might be six, seven acres, eight maybe at the most, and they're going great guns down there. You know, we're building a coffee shop on Arsenal Street, nothing wrong with that. Everybody likes a cup of coffee, but we, there's, somebody missed the boat, I think, possibly on Amazon. They'll pay taxes. Town familia doesn't have a town tax and they're, they have a county and no town tax. So the county taxes are going down, so they're going to pay less than what they would have paid in the city. You know, they would have wanted a pilot of some sort or some kind of a agreement and probably that isn't so awful bad, but, no, I don't, we may, we may be led right into disillusion with if we don't get our finances in order. Am I not going to happen next year or the year, I could see it in 10 years, 12, 15 years? This, you know, the city dissolves itself. It's not the first time it's happened. Villages go out of business and the towns absorb them. The county would take this over.
Mr. Garabrant, we'll turn to you. The Thompson Park Golf Course lost money the first two years that the city owned it. The numbers for this year are expected to come out next month. Do you believe that it needs to turn a profit in order for the city to keep running it? If it cannot turn a profit, should it be closed? Should it be sold?
I think, I think if, depending on the financials that get released, if it is relatively close to breaking even or if the, you know, if we believe that it can break even, we need to commit to it. I think the instability surrounding that business has really hurt the past couple of years of whether, no one knows if this is going to be the last season it's open or if it even lasts through the season. I think we need to commit to two, three, four years of we're going to make a run at this if that's the, if we think breaking even is a possibility, just so that it has that stability. They're not booking tournaments right now for next season. That's something, you know, that needs to be done well in advance. So that's what I would like to see. And then if it, if it continues to lose hundreds of thousands of dollars as it has, then I believe, you know, we should pursue a lease, leasing it out. I believe we can pursue selling it. I know it's on parkland, it's now registered parkland. I think, you know, we, there's the option at least of selling it through home rule legislation. I think that would have to be, you know, investigated. I think there's also avenues to, you know, have it run a little more successfully. One thing I'd like to see is if it stays open, see if we can, you know, have some partnerships with some other local golf courses and do reciprocals where, you know, members at one course can play for a discounted rate at our course and vice versa. I think that's, that's very common from my understanding in the golf industry. So I think simple things like that could also be, you know, try to, if we're going to keep operating it, we need to do everything we can to make it successful. And so I think stability and, you know, some common golf practices, I think, should be utilized.
Mr. Osborne.
Yeah, I, you know, I'd like to see what the numbers are this year. I think originally it was projected in the budget to lose about $34,000, which is, you know, positive considering what it's lost the last, last two years prior. But, you know, we, we're going to have to reassess it. We really are, especially if it continues to lose money. I don't know what the timeframe would be, but I would be open to giving it, you know, three years potentially, just to see, you know, if it does end up breaking even or maybe even makes a little bit of money. But at the end of the day, we're still taking on those operational costs that we hadn't taken on prior, so it's still going to cost us a little bit of money doing that. And, you know, golf is completely contingent upon the weather and tournaments and everything else. So, you know, as Mr. Garabrant alluded to, we don't have any tournaments booked this year primarily because of that uncertainty. So I think we need, we need to create a little bit of stability around the golf course at this time, test the waters for the next few years and see how it's doing. And from there, you know, in the meantime, we should be, you know, having conversations with maybe parties that are interested in leasing it or whatever else so they can take on those operational costs and so on. Because right now, I think that, you know, somebody that is in the business of running a golf course would probably be a more optimal situation than, you know, government running it, which it has never done before in the city. So, again, you know, I would just like to kind of see where things go and book those tournaments, see if it succeeds and if not, reevaluate, reassess.
Mr. Monaco.
I agree with the two gentlemen. You've got to give it a chance. You know, most businesses, when they, you know, I had my own business. The first couple of years were lean and the things started to pick up in year three, four. You've got to kind of give it four to five years. I think the council needs in January to say, okay, we're going, this is where we are, not wait till June, and they need to say, okay, we're going to increase, if we're going to increase green fees by a dollar and membership by 25 or 30, okay. And now they know, people know that they can book a tournament in January, but don't wait till June because now you're behind, everybody else has already got things lined up and you're not going to, not going to get many. And I don't know how much, I don't know how profitable tournaments are, but I know if you got 144 people, you got to be making some kind of money, I would assume. But yeah, I think it has to, after four or five years, if it's not carrying the load, then it's got to be looked at whether it can be leased to somebody. But then you got to find a person who wants to lease it. And selling it, because it's in park, you've got to go through a state assembly and senate, signed off by the governor, the home rule legislation, that's just, that just takes forever. Then while the thing sits dormant, it all turns to hayfield. So I think that, keep it going for the time being and see where we are in a couple of years and if it's not doing it, they make the decision, the council will have to make a decision, hey, we've tried this, it's not working. You know, pools don't make money, but they're an amenity to the city. Pools cost money to operate, a couple hundred thousand dollars apiece. So you got to, you got to try and see where you are.
Mr. Velazquez.
Yes, thank you. So my biggest problem with the whole golf course situation, and the gentlemen have kind of brought this up, you know, at this point, with where the city is financially, you know, you can't have your cake and eat it too. We can't talk about these sweeping staff cuts and cutting services and then keep something like, you know, a golf course on our books. And then we're kind of dancing around the real issue here or the real moment. You know, a local developer has expressed interest in expanding Ives Hill, a private golf course, from nine holes to 18, but a deed restriction was placed on that property, you know, to prevent competition on the municipal golf course. We've kind of danced around that issue in that, you know, that deed restriction is either going to have to be lifted, which I worry that if we elect the wrong council members, you know, we'll kind of lift that deed restriction with no strings attached. You know, that's not where I'm coming from. City taxpayers paid an exorbitant amount for that deed restriction. I personally believe that the city, city taxpayers ultimately, should be compensated to lift that deed restriction and we should allow this developer to expand Ives Hill to an 18-hole golf course, you know, give the city-owned golf course one more year, but ultimately, I personally think the city golf course should be closed, barring, you know, some significant uptick in revenue next year.
I would give each of the three of you a chance to respond to that about the deed restriction quickly, if you would.
Yeah, I think if you were even to consider lifting the deed restriction, the city obviously would have to be compensated. It shows why so many were against the golf course deal to begin with of, you know, that Ives Hill being at 18 holes is what's best for the community, but that conflicts with the city government business itself because we're now in the golf course business. So, you know, the next council will be put in a bad situation through, from sins of the past. However, I think for people that have, that live here and have lived here their entire lives, it's tough to say that you want to close the golf course at Thompson Park without pursuing every avenue to see its operation, whether through a lease or through selling it. Because I, it's, it's a city institution. It would be a real shame if it were to just close. I think, you know, we need to pursue every avenue to see its success, whether that's the city operating it or not, but to just close it, I think, would be a real shame and sadness for, you know, the residents of our community.
Mr. Osborne on the deed restriction.
Yeah, I think, you know, this just boils down to how bad the deal was to begin with, right? And I think it's put us in a very precarious position, particularly with the situation. You know, I just want to quickly preface and just say, you know, Ives Hill and the Thompson Park Golf Course existed harmoniously for years up until the last five, when this deal came about. And now here we are, city-owned golf course, government-owned golf course, you know, restricting a competitor to nine holes. To me, that's the antithesis of how government should operate, number one. Number two, it's complete government overreach. With that being said, you know, because we have spent so much money on purchasing the Thompson Park Golf Course with this deed restriction included with some value, with a value of some kind, you know, I would like to see, you know, the taxpayer become whole on that if we were to lift that deed restriction, but something tells me that that's, you know, I don't think that would happen ultimately.
Mr. Monaco.
I agree with the other two gentlemen. There's a value to that deed restriction. Now, whether, whatever number you've heard, I've heard kicked around, whether it was 851.7 or whatever, that course, that back nine of that course has been dormant since before 2020. That place sat dormant and they can't operate the restaurant if there's no golf course there. Now, whether it be eight holes, six holes, or 18 holes, but there is a value to lifting that deed restriction. I mean, that was, the deal between, the original purchase between the city and the former Thompson Park owner was a, okay, that's a good, that's a deal. The sidebar agreement that the man who, gentleman who owned the Thompson Park course and the former owner of Ives Hill, that's a whole sidebar agreement. And that, I think, is what muddied this whole thing up. If that wasn't in there, I don't think, I hear this from people knocking on doors, hey, jeez, you know, we're not going to buy another golf course, I hope. No, there isn't any for sale in the city. And as Doug said, these two places have operated for 100 years. Ives Hill became 18 holes probably in the, about the same time in the late 60s as Thompson Park, because they're both nine-hole courses. And the Ives Hill Land Corporation, and I don't know, in the late 60s, early 70s, developed the back nine, or call it the back nine, that's, that's on the west side of Ives Street. In Thompson Park, you know, they had leased some land from the city because the city couldn't really sell it to them, so they had a many-year lease with the Watertown Golf Course Corporation. And that just, that started this whole thing. But there, I believe there's value with the deed restriction.
All right, Mr. Osborne, we'll continue with other questions. In the current budget, the city gives Zoo New York $100,000. Zoo officials have said that amount and the money that they get from Jefferson County will allow the zoo to continue running as it currently does. Should the city continue to fund Zoo New York, increase the funding to help it grow, or should it decrease funding in order to offset other costs that the city has?
Well, look, I, you know, I don't foresee the city continuing to dole out six figures annually to the zoo. I just don't think we can afford to do that. What I would like to see, on the other hand, is, you know, I understand that the zoo has been, it's been a cornerstone at the park for generations, okay? And I think it provides a true service to the community and it provides a lot of enjoyment. With that being said, I would also like to see the zoo become a little bit more self-sustaining and self-sufficient without, you know, having to ask for, you know, six figures or more between the city and the county year after year. I think the other thing I would like to see is for, you know, the conservancy to be a little bit more transparent with their operations and their books. And, you know, if they're asking to be partners with the city, that we have a little bit more oversight on all of that, too. But again, you know, I would, I would like to see them continue to succeed and exist, but I can't foresee us continuing to provide them with, you know, six figures or more year after year. I know it also puts us in kind of a precarious position because a lot of our buildings and, you know, the grounds itself belong to the city. So, you know, it's within our interest as well to ensure that those buildings are up kept or we find, you know, a new purpose for, for that, for that area. So it's going to take a lot of forethought. Nobody wants to see it closed. It has to be an option. You know, the conservancy has to look at that as an option, too. And, you know, what I would like to see is us to partner up with them, have a little bit more oversight and a little bit more transparency on their end, for sure.
Mr. Monaco.
It's right. The city owns like three of the buildings and the conservancy owns three of the buildings, three and four. And the city in the past, I was working for the city when the, when the zoo first opened in the mid 90s. And the city had a stipend, I don't remember exactly, it was 20 or $25,000. And if, if one of the buildings, if the, say, the director's house needed a water, they'd call the plumber, or if a furnace needed fixed in, or every year they'd maybe budget some money to replace the windows or whatever. And that, and we kept track, the city kept track of what they spent out of that 25 or $30,000 stipend. And that's the way it always was until at least recently, when they got into asking for, you know, they'd come two or three times a couple of years, the city would get them some, some money to keep them afloat. They laid off a bunch of people, okay, here's this money. Then they wanted like 375 for two years. Whoa, you know, that's a lot of money. And they, you know, can they give them any more than the 100? I think it's a, it's a regional asset, you know, when the county gives them 60,000, they don't seem to be, they don't seem to be willing to, to give them any more. And I don't think the city can give them any more. And I think they do need to open the books up, I guess, or call it transparency or whatever you want to call it, to see, you know, exactly where they're, where they're spending on. I think they're working on a shoestring. They, you know, they get, they just got, you know, they got about 100 grand here in the last two, three weeks. It was a New York Times article, but that's just a one-time infusion. That'll probably feed the animals through the winter. You know, I was at the Ives Hill Retirement Community last week speaking to a number of people up there and the lady, I was talking about, you know, this, and she goes, you know, if you, you need, to make the city vibrant and want people to live here, you need attractions. She goes, so why, if you close it, now you're taking away an attraction that people are going to want to go up and take a look. Take their kids up, you know, grandkids come, you know, so they go a couple of times. Yeah, they've seen it before, but it's, it's always kind of a fun hour and a half. And so I think, I hate, I would hate to see it closed, but we talked about another thing, but if you're laying off, I don't know how many people, four, six, however, 10, you know, how do you justify to those people, well, you know, we're going to let you go, but we're going to give 100 grand to the zoo. So it's a tough, tough balance, though. But, you know, I would hate to see But, you know, I would hate to see it close, because then what do you do with the place? Just turns into everything, it'll just turn into a hayfield, like the golf course, if you close the golf course.
All right, Mr. Velazquez.
Definitely. So, the zoo is actually one of those, I don't want to call it a surprise, but more, kind of a surprise issue as I've gone door to door, you know, especially talking with families. And I also, you know, back during this last budget session, in, back in April and May, you know, it's worth noting that the zoo supporters were extremely vocal. They were at council meetings, and I spoke to plenty of them, and I even, you know, sat down with Dr. Erwin at the zoo, you know, to discuss the zoo's viability. He gave me the zoo's plan, you know, we had a good conversation, he took me on the tour. With that said, I don't see the zoo's funding requests that were in that plan, you know, they were asking for 375 from the county, 375 from the state. I don't see that as a realistic number. It's worth noting, though, that we have Fort Drum 10 miles outside of the city, and we do need, as I believe Mr. Monaco alluded to, is we need attractions, you know, especially to attract residents to the area. We talk about these sweeping budget cuts, we talk about staff reductions, which I'm wholeheartedly in support of, but we also need to maintain a certain level of attractions. You know, we spent all of this time talking about the golf course, you know, I have to ask myself, from a business standpoint, from a city longevity standpoint, what yields more for the city and ultimately provides more happiness to the residents, a zoo or a golf course? You know, if I'm having to make these tough decisions, if I'm lucky enough to be elected, you know, I'm going to look at those issues and I'm going to do what I feel is best for the families of the city. I'm up here because I feel that I can do a great job representing folks. And one thing that was really telling was seeing all of those zoo supporters and speaking with them. You know, it is our job, you know, if any of us is elected, to listen to folks who support any one of these ideas, you know, hear what they're saying, you know, understand their reasons for supporting what they do. And this is bad politics, but I will completely own up to the fact that I'm open to being persuaded if, you know, the majority of residents support something. So with the zoo, I see a lot of value in the zoo. I will even share that we took, and it just happened to coincide, it wasn't related to the primary back in June, but my class had a field trip to the zoo back in June. We had a phenomenal time. So the zoo provides excellent attractiveness for city residents, for families, for schoolchildren. You know, there were several schools, several districts, not Watertown students, that were at the zoo. So I do support maintaining the zoo's present level of funding, but it's also worth noting, you know, I heard from a certain county official that the county is actually interested in stepping up their support, so I hope to see that come to fruition. But I'm, I'm a supporter of the zoo.
Mr. Gerber.
Yeah, so, you know, I have two young daughters, three and one. I feel like that gives me a unique perspective on, on the zoo, where me and my wife, we're members, we take them up quite regularly. You know, for young families in our area, you got, the zoo and the library are really like the two big things that you can, that have regular events where you can take your, your children up to. I mean, we were just up there, you know, for their record-setting Boo at the Zoo. I was chasing around a Snow White and an Elsa, and it was, it was a great event. It's important to the, the community to be able to have, you know, recreation like that, educational assets like that for our young people, especially if we want to attract, you know, young families to living in the city. That being said, I, you know, our, our budget situation is what it is. We're not in the position, I believe, to give hundreds of thousands of dollars to them year over year. In a similar vein to what Mr. Osborne said, for transparency, what I've been calling on, you know, since, since May is, is I feel that there should be some sort of work session with the zoo, the conservancy and the zoo director. I feel like a lot of the, the, you know, dialogue between the city and the zoo has largely been through media or privilege of the floor presentations. I don't feel like there's been a lot of Q and A back and forth. And, and it's not to be adversarial, I think there's legitimate questions that, that need to be asked. You know, we, we don't have a good idea of their, of their budget situation, we don't have a good idea of where the money we've been providing them has been going. Looking at their financial plan, a large portion of it seems to be based around, you know, getting zoo accreditation, which to an outsider who knows nothing about running a zoo, that seems kind of more like an inside baseball type thing. It doesn't seem like something that could attract, you know, additional people to the zoo. So those are questions I'd like to see. I'm all for the city helping the zoo, you know, in ways other than just these monetary contributions year over year at budget time. If, if there's ways that can be, that can be done, I'd like to see, you know, them pursue more additional private funding and grants. I don't, I don't know what they've been, been doing. I do know in the past, you know, I've talked with several members of the, of former members of the zoo board, and they said when they got out, you know, 15 years ago or so, that the zoo had money. So I'd like to know what, what's changed recently on that and, you know, see if the county can also get on board as well, if, if the city's continuing to help them out in some way. But yeah, with the zoo and the golf course, we need to be careful with our, our city institutions of just flippantly saying, well, we got to close them. Because if you, if you shut down everything in your city with history, you're not going to be able to attract new residents. I mean, you're going to lose a good portion of your cultural identity, and that's something that we need to hang on to and cultivate and grow. So, yeah, our budget situation is what it is, but we shouldn't, we should pursue every avenue to, to supporting them, whether it's financial or not.
All right, Mr. Monaco. This was briefly touched on earlier by most of you folks, but homelessness, growing issue in Watertown. The county has added a housing coordinator. Two housing projects are in the works in the city, and multiple groups are working together to address homelessness. But what is the city's role in this? Should it be doing more and can it do more?
I don't think the city can do more. You know, this county's taken the lead, they have the social, Department of Social Services, they have a homeless, I'm not sure of the exact title, homeless coordinator. They've specifically put that budget in to address it. It's, it's a problem that's not just to Watertown. Now, in Jefferson County, it's to Watertown because this is the hub where the services are. You're not going to find many homeless people, probably in Three Mile Bay or Lorraine or Worth, but if you look around Watertown, they say there's 155. I don't know if that's a good number, bad number, or what. But I see a lot of people pushing shopping carts around. You know, you want to make Watertown, especially the downtown area, a vibrant area, people to come to, whether it be shopping or have a dinner, a couple, have a drink at one of the bars downtown. You don't want to, I don't know the word, you don't want a bunch of vagrants pushing carts around and causing a disturbance. You know, you see people wading in the fountain and the dog, giving the dog a bath in the fountain. Those type of things the city can, can, but the whole systemic thing of unhoused population is bigger than the city of Watertown. And there's two, two buildings that are, one on Main Avenue will probably be open in, nah, next, early to late winter, and that'll help some. The one on the cross from the post office on Commerce Park is probably a year or better. That's a, that's a pretty big building and lot, they're just, they're really not, they're not even out of the ground yet, for lack of a better terminology. So, it's, it's everybody's problem, but I think as far as the city solving the homeless issue, I don't see us, we can enforce things, you know. What's happened is you chase them out of here and they go over here. And a lot of these people are happy living the way they're living. If you go under Department of Social Service, they have requirements and guidelines. You must be this, this, and this. Some of these folks don't want to follow the rules. There was, I have a property here in the city, back in June, there were boughs, there was some homeless people living across from, from my property on the riverbank. And I got to talk with them, maybe there, I don't know, seven, eight days, they weren't bad people. The problem is, the, it was a couple. And she had had some pretty serious health issues, needed a caregiver, the boyfriend had to take care of her. Well, she wasn't working, he got fired because he wasn't coming to work taking care of her, they couldn't pay the rent, so they got, you know, they got like, they got booted out of their apartment. They seemed, you know, I think it was a, a true situation. What do you do for that? Well, I think they've since got some kind of assistance, because they weren't, they just, you know, they knew they had to do something before winter came. And, you know, I helped them out a couple of times. And, but it's just a tough situation, tough call. But I think it's more of a larger problem than what the city itself can solve.
Mr. Velazquez.
Of course. So it's well-known that we have a homeless, homelessness problem here in the city, but it's also worth noting that, as Mr. Monaco alluded to, this is a problem in many other municipalities, in many other cities and states. So I remember 10 years ago, seeing, you know, the homelessness issues in Seattle and Portland and San Francisco and thinking, or knowing that we have homelessness in Watertown, but it just, it wasn't in the spotlight back then. I do question, though, where these folks are coming from. You know, some, like the story that Mr. Monaco just shared, some of these folks are local and they do fall on hard times. You know, we have an affordability crisis, again, not only in the city of Watertown, but in many other municipalities. You know, inflation for many years ran rampant. Rents went up significantly, just the cost of living has gone up exponentially. But I worry about where some of these folks are coming from, and it does seem that we have an increasing number of folks from out of the area, and I, I do question if the county is looking into this, if the county is actively pushing back against this. Again, as someone previously mentioned, other than passing ordinances and passing certain restrictions, you know, two come to mind. Last year, the city council voted to outlaw, or passed an ordinance outlawing, you know, public camping, because we had an issue with little encampments popping up at City Hall. That's a Band-Aid solution. You know, that kind of just takes the problem from one, one location of the city and shifts it somewhere else. And as we saw over the summer, it shifted this from City Hall to the Strauss Walkway and Public Square, and an area where, you know, we spent $10 million in downtown revitalization funds. And we risk harming these small businesses, you know, contributing to our city. We risk losing these jobs, we risk losing investment. The gentlemen up here have mentioned the, the need to increase revenue, to attract large-scale employers to the area. You know, if we're a small city dealing with big city problems and we're not getting help from Albany or our congressional representatives or assembly members, and we're trying to take on this whole issue in the city of Watertown, this issue is bigger than the city of Watertown. You know, this involves, this requires a collaborative approach. It's, it's worth noting, actually, that when I came to the Seven News Studio back in September, early September for an interview, you know, I was out of my car for 10 seconds and a woman approached me, very polite, I might add, but she was pushing a shopping cart. She asked me where a diner was. I pointed her to the Crystal, you know, around the block. And she said, oh, you know, thank you, I just got here. I didn't stop and ask her where she came from, but I've heard that from many residents, that they don't think these folks are local, and I'm, I'm starting to see it myself. So with the whole homelessness issue, you know, I firmly believe that homelessness requires taking a collaborative approach, you know, working with our leaders at the county and state level to address deteriorating mental health outcomes. So a lot of homelessness, it's a cause and effect relationship, and homelessness is the effect. A lot of it, a lot of the time, it's a mental health problem that's the cause. You know, all of these asylums closed down, you know, these institutions to care for these folks experiencing mental health issues, you know, drug treatment issues. Biggest thing I hear going door to door is people finding needles, kids finding needles. You know, it's only a matter of time until, you know, we have a public health crisis in the city if this isn't addressed. You know, it requires all of us working together. But I had a good conversation over the summer with a county official, you know, and he told me that there's these street outreach teams and they're doing data collection. I just, I want to push the county a little more and I want to, you know, interact with the state and kind of push back and say, you know, we have a problem here, we need to advocate for better policy. This is not just a city issue, but there's things we can do in the city.
Mr. Gerber, the city's role and ability to address homelessness?
Yeah, I, I think the responsibility largely falls on the county, but that doesn't, you know, make me feel any better about it as a city resident, as someone with young children. And, and so I agree that, you know, that this is larger than the, the city itself. And, and that's why what I'd like to see, you know, is, is some sort of task force formed where we have city officials, we have state officials, we have county officials, you know, we have nonprofit organizations, we have addiction counseling, you know, program coordinators, we have law enforcement. We get all those people in a room and we discuss, you know, root causes, we discuss what's been working, what hasn't been working, even identify if there's, you know, local people known that are, have just fallen on hard times and just need a hand. And, you know, if there's other people that are known to be from outside the area, if there's ways, you know, of getting them back to where, from where they came from. And a lot of it, too, there are things being done, you, you hear about, but it's, I feel like there's been a communication gap on what those things are. I feel like it's not being publicly displayed or communicated very well. So I think that'd be something that task force would, would also serve our community for. And, and going back to the square, that's another anchor of our community, that's another hyster, historic, you know, landmark area of, of our community. And to see how the homelessness issues affected that area the way it has is, has been a true shame. And I, you, you hate to see with all the investment that we've put into it, you hate to see it affect, you know, businesses and, and people trying to live there. One thing I'd like to see, my grandfather was, was a city police officer, he'd served for 20-plus years. At one point, he was located and doing foot patrol on the American Corner. I'd like to see if we're able to allocate some police resources to doing that again, even if it's just during, you know, peak hours, so that people coming down to shop or to dine, you know, feel safe, if people coming to work feel safe. And if any issues pop up, they're taken care of quickly. I think that would be, having that sort of presence would be very beneficial to the square in particular. Mr. Velazquez mentioned, you know, the Strauss Walkway. When I came back from college, you know, I lived above what, what was Spokes at the time, it's now the Bad Apple Downtown. I lived in an apartment above there and I had to walk, you know, I parked in the JV Wise parking lot, I walked up the Strauss Walkway to get to my apartment every day. And if I had to walk by, you know, homeless encampments to do that, it would, it would have been, you know, I would not have done it, I would not have lived there. And at the time, there was a, a, a small but forceful community of young professionals that took pride in living there. And I thought, you know, at the time, I thought that was the future of the city, I thought that's where things were heading. I, I think COVID kind of put a downturn on that, but as a city, that's what we should want to see. So if we're going to have, you know, things such as the homelessness issue affecting that progress, then we really need to look at all options of what we can, of what can be done. So I think, you know, looking at an increased police presence and then publicly working with, you know, these other agencies that are involved to see if we can all work together to get something done.
Mr. Osborne.
Yeah. So, I don't know about the city having a larger role, but it should have an integral role in addressing this issue. The county does have a lot of the resources to address it, but at the end of the day, I don't think there is a real solution for it, right? I think, you know, if we were, have, work collaboratively with the county, with the service providers in the area, I think we could mitigate the issue. But ultimately, what it narrows down to, and this is having worked with this population, that is, you know, it takes personal responsibility at the end of the day. We have all these, as I was alluding to, we have all these service providers out there that are willing to help out these folks. There are some conditions that are attached to this help, and it's a matter, matter of just kind of following through and, you know, demonstrating some personal responsibility. You know, and if that doesn't work, then they need to be held accountable, too, right? By the service providers, by law enforcement, by, you know, the city through ordinances, or, you know, if they are engaging in criminal activity, you know, they need to be held accountable in that respect in some way. But I think, you know, also, we had a lot, there are a lot of folks that have come outside of the area and moved here primarily because we do have a lot of service providers. They have better access than they do maybe in Anadaga County, in Monroe County, Oswego County, et cetera. So it's almost like a blessing and a curse at the same time. But nonetheless, we do have providers here that are willing to help. I think a lot of people were also displaced that originally from here, after 232 West Main got... that originally from here after 232 West Main got condemned, as well as Factory Street at the time too. So I think we're still kind of reeling from, you know, the backlash of all of that and trying to pick up the pieces and trying to figure out where we can kind of place these folks. I think, you know, constructing these two new buildings to house the homeless, I think will, is a step in the right direction. But again, I don't think it's going to ultimately resolve everything. I think it's going to take, you know, maybe some things that aren't, you know, quantifiable. Like it's gonna, like I said, like personal responsibility and, you know, just, you know, explaining that, you know, homelessness at the end of the day isn't acceptable. Being housed is, getting help is. And I think that's the direction that, you know, we can take with a collaborative, collaborative effort.
All right. I want to start to wrap us up here tonight. We'll return to Mr. Velazquez for some closing statements, if you have any. And I want to kind of start you off with this. A, a lot of things we've heard tonight is, I agree with my opponent. I, I, you know, I second that. So as folks go out and vote in the coming week, how do you pitch yourself to them? What separates you and why should they vote for you?
Yes. So first, I have to thank the other candidates up here. You know, running for office, it's, it's a journey. And if I could choose, I would not choose three other people to be on this journey with me. So I have the utmost respect for you gentlemen. I've learned a lot about them. You know, all of us are great people who are just trying to make a difference in our community. But with that said, yeah, there's things we agree on and there's different approaches. My thing is, and I will own up to this, I'm not the most refined guy. I get that. Sometimes I come across as mildly abrasive and somewhat assertive. I personally think that's a redeeming quality in government. I think we need strong leaders. I think we need people who don't dance around issues. They take a decisive stand on an issue and, you know, fight to the end on supporting what they support. I do have to take time though, I wanted to respond to, much earlier in the evening to something. It's a, the strong mayor issue. You know, I, I'm not sold completely on that strong mayor form of government, but what I am sold on is given, is giving residents a choice. So I, I do challenge the gentleman up here that, you know, even if you're not sold on that issue specifically, the worst case scenario for you is you support the referendum, you support giving residents a choice. And then if you, any of us is elected, we make the case as to what we think is the ideal form of government in the city of Watertown. So if you wait until residents are up in arms about something, they might not be up in arms about strong mayor versus, you know, the residency and the city manager issue right now. But if you wait until residents are up in arms, you've waited too long. You know, government needs to be proactive and not reactive. If you're waiting until residents are upset, you're being reactive. You're not being proactive and saying, hey, I believe in giving you a choice and I'm gonna do that. So, you know, number, uh, number two, council might have a check and balance right now on the city manager and on power, but city council leaders have been ineffective over the past decade. I feel that there's a lot of dancing around the issues. And just in the past few months, look at how many issues have been tabled. You know, that's not a way to run a city. You know, as these issues are, are tabled, they're compiled and issues aren't being addressed. You know, look at how long it's taking to tear down a property on Coffeen Street. You know, we're kicking the can down the road on all of these issues. And if you ask me, the system's not working. So in closing, so my name, as you've surmised by now, is Anthony Velazquez. I'm running for a seat on city council because I believe we need to take a different approach to governing. So while the population and tax base has declined, the previous council majority failed to develop a plan that adequately addressed, you know, the looming budget crisis, our failing infrastructure, quality of life issues from the homelessness to the blight that we've discussed this evening, the outward, the significant outward migration. We have far more people choosing to leave the city of Watertown than choosing to move in. That's a problem. And if left unaddressed, you know, that will lead to a dissolution moving forward. The economic stagnation, increased crime, increased blight, rampant dissatisfaction with city leaders, some of whom don't even live here. What statement is that sending to our residents? I believe in taking a moderate, sensible approach to local governance, collaborative really. You know, I will work with anyone who is elected. I will work with any city, city leader, city official. This evening, I, I hoped that, that I offered a positive, forward-looking vision that finally addresses aging infrastructure, such as roads, sidewalks, the water system, disinfected byproduct, public safety from the homelessness issue to increasing theft and crime in neighborhoods, revitalizes decaying neighborhoods, addressing the blight situation, retains residents, as well as, one thing that Mr. Garrett said, sir, and I completely agree, is young professionals moving to the city. That's what's ultimately going to lead to a more prosperous Watertown. I will work, I will work with anyone who sees that as our city's future, who sees that as our mission. Make no mistake, we face many challenges in the years ahead. These challenges require collaborative leadership coupled with strong leadership, willing to make decisions necessary to ensure long-term success. I believe I am that candidate. If I'm elected, I pledge to put our residents first and to restore confidence in local government. I look forward to earning your vote on Tuesday, November 4th.
Mr. Garrett, why should folks vote for you?
Yeah, so I, I think, well, first of all, thank you to you Garrett, and thank you to WWNY for, you know, hosting us this evening. I think, one, you mentioned how we, we agree on a lot of different issues. I'd like to, you know, accentuate three, three ways that I'm slightly different than the others running. I think, one, you know, is, I have, I'm an electrical engineer. I work over at Jade Stone Engineering on Van Dusse Street in Watertown. I was a member of the, the hydro committee. I was somewhat touched on tonight, not, not terribly much, but the, the, the end of the national grid hydro contract that ends in 2030, that could, you know, potentially worsen our, our budget situation. I think, you know, once the, the new council starts in January, we really need to hit the ground running on that issue. I think we're already, you know, somewhat behind the eight ball. So, you know, I disagree with, you know, reforming the, the hydro committee. I think we have our recommendations and we need to move forward on those. I feel like, you know, my background lends me to being able to speak the language and act as somewhat of a liaison between, you know, whatever expert is brought in to help assist that process and city staff, city council, and city residents. Another thing, you know, that I think separates me is, is I, I have a young family. And that gives me a, a unique perspective on different issues and different goals that, that our city should be striving for. I think, you know, we need to make a strong effort to attract young families to, to raise their children in the city. And, you know, and the third thing is, I believe that I'm, you know, the only one that, that works in the private sector. I think that's, that's important because, you know, through my, my career, I do a lot of interfacing with government and agencies. So I know how to color in the lines of, of government. But I also am fully aware of the inefficiencies that come from that. So I think that could give me a broad view of, of how to proceed with things and think maybe outside the box in terms of government. You know, and then after tonight's discussion, I believe it's clear our city stands at an inflection point of, of being able to course correct from, you know, the, the downward trajectory our city's seen the past several years. The new city council will be tasked with solving some longstanding issues. Addressing these issues will require thought and precision. It will require a proactive, not reactive approach. And the council will be required, you know, to work not in silos as it, as it feels that they are now, but, you know, together as one cohesive group. But I think, I think the most important thing for the new council is going to be good old fashioned hard work. It's going to be required of all council members. These issues will not be solved simply by having, you know, years on your resume or showing up to the meetings. They will require significant thought and effort, both at the meetings and behind the scenes. And I'm prepared to give that effort. I know I may be young, but I can guarantee I will not be outworked. I am willing to put in the time conversing with the public to form consensus, and I'm willing to do the research needed to find solutions. I'm willing to both incorporate lessons learned from the past and think outside the box towards the future. I'm willing to do what it takes to get the job done. I can also assure you, the taxpayer, that I will be your voice on city council. I'm not the candidate who's going to be the loudest or generate the most headlines, but what I will be is a council member who listens. I'll be a council member whom you can approach with a concern, an issue, or an idea, and you will know that you have been heard and your thoughts considered. I will stand behind my stances firmly when necessary and make sure that you are always represented. And in closing, I'd just like to say, being a candidate for city council has been an honor. I appreciate every conversation I've had with residents during this election cycle, whether they be at the supermarket, a neighborhood festival, or your own front porch. Watertown is our home, and I truly believe that moving forward, our community can come together and address the obstacles in our way head-on, creating an area where families can flourish and businesses can thrive. Thank you, and thank you for your consideration.
Mr. Osmore.
Yes. So, thank you Garrett. Thanks for having us tonight. It was a pleasure. Thanks for everybody that watched us tonight as well. I hope they got all the information that they need at this point. I think what sets me apart from the others is my background. My degree is in public policy. I interned at the planning department for, at City Hall. I have some practical government experience for working as an intern at the governor's regional office here in Watertown. But most importantly, I think it's my careers, right? So I was Child Protective Services caseworker for seven years. And I moved into my new role as a probation, probation officer for the last year and a half. I think, you know, with those two jobs, it's, my experience there has given me an intimate awareness of the community at large that I don't, I, I think, you know, the other candidates can't necessarily speak to. But ultimately, you know, I can't emphasize enough how critical this election is because it will determine the course of Watertown's future. As discussed tonight, there are so many issues that need to be addressed with a sense of urgency. And I know what it takes to serve the public because I've been doing it for almost a decade. It's a full-time responsibility that sometimes extends after regular business hours. It takes responsiveness and the right temperament. It takes a willingness and determination to generate consensus. But most importantly, it takes a sense of humility and never losing sight of those you are serving. If I have the privilege to earn your vote and be your council member, that will be the approach I take. Thank you.
And Mr. Monaco.
I got experience. Thirty-plus years of management experience with the city of Watertown. I oversaw 55 to 60 employees on a daily basis at the Public Works Facility on Newell Street complex. I ran my own business prior to my city employment. So with that being said, I have signed the front side of a paycheck. So I know what it takes. I've served for the past 25 years on various boards that are big money situations. I've served 15 years on the Watertown City School District Board, four years of that in a leadership role, probably maybe four, 13, 14 years I was chairman of the finance committee, which just, which crafts the budget. I'm presently on the Jefferson Lewis Bocce's Board, two years president. I did a two-year term as president of that board. So I guess when it, is kind of my slogan is, when it matters most, experience matters. I have more experience and leadership time than the, the three candidates on my right collectively. They're all good people. Please, you know, I know the city. I will ask the tough questions and I'll keep digging till I get the, till I get the right answer. And that gives me the edge over the other three candidates. So please take advantage of the early voting that's going on through Sat, through Sunday. And if no early vote or have an absent, have an absentee that hasn't been sent in, please send it in. It's free. All you gotta do is take a little, fill in the blanks. And if you don't have either one of those situations, please on November 4th, go and vote. I'd appreciate your vote for me. You know, there's an old saying, if you don't vote, you can't, you don't get a lot of, you don't get a right to complain. And so I think that is the whole story. And I'd like to thank Channel 7, you Garrett, and your staff here for hosting this situation. And we got a week to go. I've hit, I don't know how many houses. And I kind of hear the same thing from most of the population. So please get out and vote. If you don't vote for me, well, that's your choice. But get out and do your civic duty.
All right, gentlemen, thank you to all four of you for joining us tonight. We appreciate your time. That does it for us here on Channel 7, Election Day a week from today. So, gentlemen, thank you again. Votes home. Have a good night.